Welcome, everybody. Hopefully, this audio setup is coming through. It looks a little bit different. But welcome to Norton Planning Board's Hybrid Meeting of Tuesday, July 27, 2021. In case you're wondering, in Perth, this meeting has been posted again as a hybrid as everybody scales back from COVID. So in person, we are at the Norton Media Center, which is 184 Main Street. If you are watching on Norton Cable Access and would like to join by video, there is a Zoom link available on the meeting agenda. You can also join using the Zoom app using meeting ID 638-929-1060. There's also a calling number, 646-558-8656, again with the meeting ID 638-929-1060. Again, we are also streaming live on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15. And again, as everybody gets back used to meeting in person, meeting virtually, you can also feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting or even during the meeting to Paul DeJesepe, the Town Planner, who is seated two seats to my left. So with that out of the way, with the meeting in order here, in terms of Planning Board Business and Policies, I don't think we have anything specific to discuss here today. Same with bills and warrants and minutes, so we'll skip that aspect of our agenda. We do want to set some future meeting dates, I believe, for September and October, Paul?
Yes.
But for the sake of kind of allowing the applicants that we have in front of us here to move forward, I think we can move that to after the public hearing today, since it does tie into our master plan discussion, just kind of laying out the timing.
Thank you, Chair. Just heard from Steve, he's having a hard time hearing us.
Okay. Well, I will try and do a better job projecting at this microphone. And sorry to Julie and Scott on either side of me that I will just continue to, I guess, be loud.
You do.
So, other than the Planning Board Business and Policy, the general business items here, the first item on our agenda today is an approval not required A&R endorsement for Zero Freeman Street with the applicant Valentine Tool and Stamping and MBL Land Development. Do we have members from that project here with us or via virtually?
Brian Dunn is on Zoom.
Okay. Well, Brian, you are here and you have the floor.
Thank you very much. This is the town member of the Department of Government and the Department of Government and the Department of Government. This is at 7th and 14th Broadway in Manhattan, Massachusetts. Here on behalf of Valentine Tool. And as you can see in front of you, they've carved out a residential lot, 45,000, 437 square feet, let's go over, a little pool of acres, 1.04 acres of land off of, up to the food street called Baker Street, which is on the plan. We have the minimum frontage, the minimum block area. We also have the shape factor that also complies with subdivision and zoning regulation. And we're copping it out of the larger plots of land, which is also known by Valentine Tool and Stamping. And we're copping that one acre land out of approximately 46.8 acres of land that the Valentine Tool Company owns behind their existing business off of, off of Route 123 on the town. So we're asking you to endorse the plan approved, so we can record it and get it off the lead for as well. We've also, part of this lot, appeared the circulation testing, also designed the septic system. We also have a conservation commission approval for the level line and the work associated with the single family owner and the septic system. This is the town member of the Department of Government.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Right.
So again, you said that the frontage is on Baker Street, is that correct?
That is correct. Is it? Baker Street is a constructed approved lay on registered realty clerk. On Baker Street, we have 150 feet of frontage, as appeared on our approval not required.
Do any members of the board have specific questions about the A&R in front of us?
Tim, motion to approve the, or endorse the A&R?
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion and Kevin for the second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, we will go to the vote. All, we still, and because we do have a member who votes, we'll just stick with a roll call since we've been doing it for the last 15 months anyway. I will start with Kevin.
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the A&R is ready for endorsement, and we'll take care of that at the conclusion of the meeting.
Very good, Mr. Tim. Thank you so very much. Paul, I'll connect with you later. I picked up my last phone call, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, which is Special Permit 11115, 269 West Main Street, which is an application for a special permit for a duplex within residential 40 zoning, with the applicant as the Carlos Silva, the Order of Land and Law Trustee. So we have members here, and if you, in terms of speaking, this is the microphone setup that is going out virtually, so just please speak to us and the microphone at the same time, if that's physically possible.
Hi, everyone. I'm looking to convert 269 West Main Street from a mixed-use commercial property into a duplex. It's currently a mixed-use commercial. It has a hair salon on one side and a two-bedroom apartment on the other. I'm looking to convert, I'm looking to convert the hair salon into a one-bedroom apartment, and I will be living at the residence, if you guys go through with it. And I'm just, I'm looking to buy the property as a duplex and convert it into a residential duplex instead of having it as a mixed-use commercial property.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Was this a residential duplex at one time before the hairstylist operated out of the other half?
It may have been, but I'm not certain, because I'm not the current owner of the property. I'm looking to buy the property, and I'm not sure how they used it in the past, but they had it as a duplex in the past.
It's a mixed-use, right?
Right now, it's mixed-use, so hair salon on one side into the two-bedroom apartment. I just wanted to convert the hair salon into a one-
It appears that it may have been a duplex originally, residential duplex.
Right. It does, it does actually look like a, it may have been a duplex originally.
Okay. Are there any questions from members of the board? Paul, just to confirm, there's no conflicts with our use tables within our 40 zone for a duplex of this type, correct?
They, they just need the special permit for it, so, so that's what they're doing. And they're going in mid-August to the ZBA. They're a couple, you know, they're not changing the existing building, but we just want to make sure that a couple variances are granted.
Understood. Kevin, sorry to interrupt you off.
I think, I think Paul answered it. I was going to ask if the exterior of the structure was going to change at all.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Are there any further comments or questions from members of the board, or anything further from members of the public in person or joining us virtually? Okay. I guess that's a silent.
Tim, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Julie, for the motion and Scott for the second. Is there any further discussion for the motion to close the public hearing for 269 West Hearing none, I will go to the vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne, again, this is to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the public hearing for 269 West Main Street is now closed. Do we have any further action?
Tim, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit.
Second.
Before we act on that motion, do we want to, are there any conditions that we want to make as part of a conditional approval?
I guess that the variances get approved, Tim? Paul? Could we condition that, just to make sure the variances get approved?
Sure. Subject to, I'll add that then.
Tim, what do you think of that? That way you guys don't have any issues if the variances get approved making the change.
Okay. Scott, does your motion still stand, your second still stand?
Second stands, yes.
Okay.
I'm changing my motion on the fly.
Okay. We have the motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none, we will go to the roll call vote once again. Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So conditional approval for 269 West Main Street Special Permit, and Paul will follow up with you in terms of the decision and steps from that, coming off that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we can leave now?
Yeah.
We want you to-
I mean, hey, you can leave too.
Joining our discussion of the master plan.
Riveting.
So the final item on our agenda today is the discussion regarding the Norton Master Plan, which also ties into our earlier agenda item for future meeting dates. So Paul, if you wanted to just share in terms of the timing of how this might go forward for the board to recommend this to Town Meeting?
Sure. So, so first, Town Meeting is scheduled for October 25. So that, that sets the, you know, the most important deadline. Another one that's really important is August 31 is when we have to submit the warrant article placeholder language. So this puts us in good shape, because as this is being initiated by the Planning Board, and we still have our meetings, the meeting tonight, we have two meetings in August, it'll be, you know, time, you know, if we have, if we need it, to do a deep dive. But by August 31, we'll be in great shape for us to submit it, for the, submit the warrant language that would ultimately go to select board. And then, one of the reasons we need you to pick dates in September is in October will be, it still has to come back to you to refer it back to Town Meeting, just as it, as you would any other zoning bylaw change. So we need those dates, so that way I can fill in my work plan, and we'll all be on the right, all on the same page as to what our deadlines are.
So we need to submit language for the article, then receive the article back and approve that it's going to Town Meeting?
Right. Which is actually similar to what we did with Village Center Core. Remember, you initiated that, and then it still came back for review, you know, shortly before it was transmitted to-
Should be lighter, though, because of what will be written, right?
It's not code like Village Center Core was, so it should be, it should-
Well, we should have a, I would say, a final version of it published on the web somewhere for people to reference, right?
Yes. Yeah. So any changes that you all direct me to make here, I will record and then get with Serpent, who's our consultant, and they will make changes, and that will be reflected online as well.
Okay.
And then you will see the later, the newer changes, the latest updates.
Okay. So you are looking for us to set meeting dates in September and October, correct?
Yes.
So if we want to stick with Tuesdays, we have the 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th. I know the 28th is not good for myself, but I am only one member of the board here.
I see that the 7th is Rosh Hashanah. Is that the 2nd? Just in your word.
The day after Labor Day, too.
Oh, great.
7th is not good for me.
Okay.
I'll be on vacation that week. It's the day after, really, the day after the music. What do you think?
It's the 14th.
All right. Do we have objections to doing back-to-back meetings on the 14th and the 21st? Steve, were you able to hear me there?
Yeah, no, that's not for me.
Okay.
And what are the August meeting dates?
The August 1st and the 10th and the 24th, Peter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we'll be there, and hopefully they'll be in hybrid, right?
Yep.
Okay. And October, if we're doing the 21st, Columbus Day is probably the 11th, correct?
That's correct.
And Town Meeting is, again, the 25th?
25th, yeah.
Yep.
The 5th of the 19th? Does anybody have any objections to that? Okay. Hearing none, I guess that means that we have set our meetings through the end of October.
Just confirm for today.
That was October 5th and October 19th.
So then we have, what, 8/10, 8/24, 9/14, 9/21, 10/5, and 10/19.
Correct. Not that it was a quiz. We want to hold off there, if we want to go through the end of the year while we're at it.
I don't mind just going to the end of the year, Tim. We only got two more months, so we might as well just book it by thing.
Yeah. So for November, unless anybody has any objections, I think my thoughts would be the 2nd and the 16th.
Second selection, yeah.
Okay, then, then never mind.
I'm actually, I'm going to be going the week of the 16th and the following week, so.
So we could do the 9th and the 30th?
The 9th and the 30th? Anybody?
That's good for me, too.
That obviously avoids Thanksgiving week, because, yeah.
And I'm going to be there for all the meetings, right here at the meeting, is that right, everyone?
Okay. And then in December, we have four Tuesdays. We have the 7th, 14th, 21st, and 28th. Does anybody have any preferences, thoughts?
I wouldn't be available this 28th.
I was going to suggest that that week, I think, is going to be a lot of traveling.
Yeah. Could do 7/21 or 7/14 and then call it for the year. Spend so much business-
I'd be good with 7/14 if you're there.
December 7th and December, December 14th?
Just so everybody knows, it'll be three-
Three weeks in a row, yeah.
Meetings in a row.
Do you have to meet twice?
We do not.
So just do the 14th, then. Because we have the 30th, two weeks from then will be the 14th.
We have to think we may not have anything for the agenda if we have three in a row.
Right.
So maybe we book the 14th and then we see how busy we are, Paul.
So keep the 7th and the 14th, and then just-
Or just do the 30th and the 14th?
Yeah.
Yeah, so once in December.
And then, I mean, after that, I mean, how likely is it that we're getting hopefully something in that we haven't heard the last two weeks? I don't know.
I'm okay booking just the 14th, and then we can see in end of October, early November, whether we feel like we need to add one on the either side of that. Okay. So that takes care of future meeting dates. So in terms of discussion about the master plan, the, the charge was to go through the first three goals, correct, Paul?
Correct.
So-
Excuse me, Tim, just before we start, I'm dealing with a work emergency, so I may have to dip in and out. Just wanted to let you know before we get started on this.
Understood. Thank you. So in terms of the first goal, goal number one, obviously, we may all have different notes in different ways.
Before we jump into that, now that we have the dates, we know when the deadline for the warrant article is, on the 31st of August, and we know the Town Meeting is the 25th of October. Which, by which Planning Board meeting should we have a final revision to really target?
Okay.
Final, final vote recommendation?
Ideally, September 21st. October 5th gets us, could still be okay, but if we're, if we're able to get September 25th, then we're not going to have any problems with amendments, you know? I think that's what we should be shooting for, is that. So it still gives us, you know, we're meeting, so wait, did I, wait, for the one referring to Town Meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I would say the 21st, so, and if by some chance there is an issue, we would have a fallback of October 5th. But hopefully between all the meetings we're having now, and then those potential meetings in September, we should be more than ready to-
So then we have today to cover the first half of the plan, then on the 10th of August, we would cover the second half. That will then have all of our comments out for final rev. That then gives that team basically three weeks to come back.
Yeah.
We recommend, and then we're good.
Okay.
And it'll actually be, the team will have, have a bit more than that. That 31st is actually just placeholder language, but within a couple of weeks of that, we have to have the full, the full plan done, but I don't see why it would take them that long anyway.
No.
But there is some, we do have some-
So basically, after the 21st of September, we would have a PDF version that we consider final, that we've made our recommendation on, that would then be online for people to review before Town Meeting.
Yes.
That's a, would be a month, then. I think that's good.
Yes.
Right.
I think, I think that having something out there and published and being pushed for a month-
Especially if it's 130 pages or whatever.
And as you had asked at the last meeting, and I don't have a date yet set, but, you know, now that we have some targets, we will set up, I will set up another public informational session. I'll work with Shane or Jason here at the Media Center to figure out what shape that looks like, but it'll be recorded in some fashion. But we'll, you know, we'll have the information, you know, we have it online, we'll keep updating it, but we'll have opportunities for people to weigh in again, in addition to all the public outreach events we did during the development of the plan.
Is it going to be on Zoom, or is it going to be in person?
Probably both. I would, I'm hoping that it can be hybrid.
When is it made?
Don't know. I'll work on it next week.
Okay. So are we ready to dive into our comments on the master plan itself? Since I'm assuming that we don't have, since everybody takes notes in different ways and has comments in different ways, I think that, I feel like we need to just kind of go issue by issue rather than kind of saying, Julie, what are your comments?
I'll just give my hand-reared comments, Paul.
I think if, Mr. Chair, I think if we just, maybe just go page by page, I think it'll go quick enough, believe it or not. I know there are a lot of pages, but most of these pages, we can just scroll through without any comments at all, especially delete and slot out, you know, pages. I don't know if you want to go through that or not, or-
That's, that's kind of what I was leaning toward, yeah. But in terms of, so that initial section is just the introduction.
Yeah, so my only comment on the introduction, Paul, is on this graphic. It's really hard to see when you print it.
Nobody prints paper anymore, Julie.
I know, I'm just saying where the dots are. So if you're not looking on it, at it online, you can't, you can't really tell. I don't know if changing the color would be better. I know it's like deviations of the purple color.
Well, I'll get with them on it. They're, they're using InDesign or Publisher, so, yeah.
We might just want to think about maybe color changes, maybe. I don't know. It's just hard to read when you print it out. Like Tim's, you can kind of tell, but if you print it out on paper, it's really hard.
Right. His looks nice.
Yeah. Mine, not so hot.
They may, they may make some-
You have a nice printer at work, Ben, mate. Is this state paper? No, I'm kidding.
Okay.
And then the page numbers-
My tax dollars paid for it.
Yep, exactly. And then the page numbers change format on this page. It goes from A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H to 1.
Okay.
So after G, it turns to 1.
Okay.
So we just want to make sure they got the page number, know the place or down there.
That may have been deliberate, actually.
But it does, there's no reason to stop it there when you're still in the, like, it's, it's a weird-
Yeah.
Weird place. And if you do, if you want to do, I don't know, you know?
Yeah. It does change from like the, the elements of the plan to the Norton Media-
Like you haven't gotten to 1 yet.
It's not a clear delineation.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Like you haven't gotten to 1 yet at that point.
Okay.
Because then it changes to planning context. You're still in introduction here on page 2.
Okay.
My last comment on the, on the intro is, is the Xfinity Center opening in Mansfield, is that really our best highlight from the 1990s and the 2000s? Something that happened in another municipality? If it is, Paul, that's okay.
I'm going to count on people like Peter to answer that. The performance arts center opened its doors for the first time on Friday, July 13, June 13, 1986.
Yep.
And I was two months old.
You're, you're old, I think. That's it?
Yep.
I want to show you that here. Julie, you'll hand, you'll hand me those?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll give you all my brand comments, yeah. Yeah. I haven't gotten through the whole thing, but I'll give you what, I'll give you what I already did, Paul. And then you can let me know if you got questions on my shorthand. I was just thinking, maybe there was something, I don't know, groundbreaking in Norton that happened in the 90s and the 2000s. If not, that's okay. Just a thought.
Rapid growth is about all it was for residential growth.
Yeah. Maybe we put that in there, like the present, the percentage of rapid growth, and you could say it was spearheaded by development like the Xfinity Day Center. I was just trying to think of something that happened, you know, in our municipality, if there was something. All right, I'm going with the intro.
I think we got a traffic light in that, back in that period.
There you go, Kevin, we can add that in.
One or multiple? One.
Okay.
We only have one.
Okay.
Well, we have multiple out thanks to, yeah.
We keep getting more every day.
Okay.
Is there any McDonald's, by the way?
McDonald's?
Yeah. Alpha pages first.
Well, when did, when did TPC open?
2002.
Oh, that would be a good one.
TPC?
Yeah, that's a great one, Paul.
And McDonald's opened its doors in September of 1990.
Okay. Okay. So we're still, after the introduction, that takes, is at the end of the timeline there. So before we get to the planning elements, is there anything further on the introduction? That's through number page three on the PDF that we have.
So page two, I had made one note. Under the section says sixty-three sixty jobs. The last bullet says that Norton has a flat tax rate of fourteen ninety, but it does reference what year.
Okay.
Because underneath Norton data, it says all data from U.S. Census thirteen through twenty seventeen unless otherwise noted. So I just, I didn't know.
Yeah, it's twenty twenty-one.
I noticed in the appendix or somewhere else, there was a, a table that showed the comparisons.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good till, till page three, though.
Okay. Plan five begins the vision section and the planning elements.
All right, my next comment's on page six.
I'm on pa, I'm on page five. Anyone else, though, before?
So going back, page three, are we gonna plug in the, the TPC opening?
I've written it down.
Okay, that was the page we were gonna add that to?
Yes.
Gotcha, thank you.
And then, like, it says there that the Xfinity Center was completed, right? I didn't know if you want to put one that opened in there?
But is that when the name changed?
It's probably when Xfinity, you know, it's a file that's still...
Greatwood?
Tweeter?
When was the Tweeter Center?
Tweeter, right?
Xfinity.
Maybe we just add that it opened if we want to reference it?
I'd like to call it Greatwoods.
But I think that that venue was open, it was just under another name.
Greatwoods?
Greatwoods.
It opened in eighty-six. It opened in eighty-six.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, like, so...
Should we add that?
This sounds argumentative, but what's the difference between Greatwoods then and Xfinity now? It's the same type of venue.
But in the timeline, we say in two thousand and two, it was completed.
Well, I can move, we can...
I would like to take that out.
Move it over to the nineteen eighties that, that Xfinity opened.
Yeah, I mean, or we just take it out and replace it with TPC.
Right, we can leave TPC under two thousand and two and then Xfinity, if it's, you know, we could say that it opened in...
Eighty-six.
In eighty-six.
Maybe something like the Xfinity Center in Mansfield opened in nineteen eighty-six.
That eighties paragraph has stuff about Mansfield already, is how I think so.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, so we'll just move it over.
Yeah.
And it was, it was called the Greatwoods Center of Formulars. You want to put that parentheses?
Yes.
It has gone through, yeah, at least three name changes.
And I'm sure it'll have to anymore.
I know.
Okay. So Scott, you said you had it ended to page number five.
But I had a point maybe just to ask what the board thinks. In, under land use, it says the second half, particularly at its nodes and corridors while protecting Norton's natural cultural resources and neighborhoods. I mean, should we define a little bit in there what protecting means? It seems so vague, right?
I'm guessing that a lot of these canned slides are generic with the survey that they use the same terminology and everything, you know, as far as their, you know, build-up slides like this one. So I don't, I mean, we can, we can modify and customize the comments, but it might be like standard language that they use for every project, for every town, I don't know.
It's clearly, in, in planning vernacular, right, that this, what this is, this section, what that language is referring to, that while there are some limited areas where they're, we're looking to attract growth and change, there are lots of areas that we still want to essentially not have significant changes to protect as well. So protection is a, is, you know, it's termed commonly used in plans. But again, it is your plan, so...
And maybe we leave it there and on the actual land use section, identify it? Because if this is like a vision and kind of a strategy to publish for people to consider, there's really no guidance in terms of what protection is.
How about if we said supporting? Would that work?
Well, I think, I was just, in my mind, I was thinking, while protecting, you know, resources and neighborhoods by limiting something, or, you know, what's that guidance of protection?
To me, to jump out is unclear, I don't know.
These are vision statements, so it's... You know, I think they probably use these same generic vision statements for every town. They just change it from Norton to whatever next town they're working on.
Okay.
And you get into more details as you get into the pages further on.
What about saying like protecting and preserving? You know, like that maybe, Scott, like...
Yeah, I mean, and like I said, on page five, maybe it's fine, but it's the header for page eleven, right? So it was, it was just a thought, like, yeah. Because I feel like that's one of the bigger strategic suggestions that this plan is saying, right?
Right.
Protect resources and neighborhoods.
What does that mean? They do repeat that in more detail.
Sudden guards out there, or are you talking about like restrict build-outs? Like, what kind of protection guidance are we looking to?
It means try, you know, directing where we have growth and change, doing it in a limited area such as along our corridors or some significant other pieces like the DOT property. But being very guarded against proposals that might be in the middle of a neighborhood.
Yep. So maybe it's like while limiting the impact to Norton's natural and cultural resources, like this? It's a suggestion, we can leave it, I don't...
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing, it's just that as, and as a board, you're always looking at code. This is, this is policy, you know, this is more vision than it is a...
So it could be interpreted, yeah.
Yeah, you have some room for it. It's what we end up implementing that, you know, we want to make sure we're, we're, you know, implementing these vision, the vision statements. But we don't, we want to be careful about being too rigid in the language or too prescriptive with it. But, but we need to be very prescriptive and rigid when we get to our bylaw changes, yeah.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay, anything further on page five or move on to six?
Okay, so my, my comment on six is these dots for the mass historical inventory, they're very hard to see in my printout copy. I, I think maybe we need to either change the symbol or the color, it just kind of blends in. I think there's a lot of them, and what I think I'm seeing is them. It's just really hard to tell with, with the mix of colors and the overlays. They just kind of get lost in the graphics.
Especially when they're in the hash areas.
Yeah, where you're...
Yeah, like, yeah, I think they just need to pop a little bit more. I'm not saying they need to be bright orange, but you know what I mean, Paul.
Right.
Okay, six and seven are both maps.
Yeah, so on, on seven, is number five where it says in the town's residential areas, is that supposed to be the yellow on the map?
I would believe so based on the legend.
Now, what is one F, two F, three F mean in the legend? One F, two F, three F residential, what does that mean?
Yeah, that's...
Paul, is that intended to be like our forty, sixty, eighty?
No.
No?
I don't think so, that's, if it is, that's not clear what that means.
Is it four?
I don't know, I mean, I...
One family, two family, three family, right?
Oh, maybe.
I don't know, let's ask Paul, because it's just, I could...
I'll ask them.
I'm looking at it, and I'm like, I have no idea what that means. And I'm trying to take it like from the public, they'd be like, what is that?
Yeah, and how many three-family residential units do we have?
And then is that supposed to be like a color gradient in the yellow?
There are gradients, so I would assume yes.
Yeah, but still, we just gotta, we gotta let that be clear.
I agree that it's not as clear as...
Yeah.
And then the other thing is for the town facilities, we got way more of these dotted images that are not this little building with the flag, which I'm assuming is really when looking further down, like schools. So I don't know if we should put all the symbols in the legend or just maybe like line a bunch of them up so that they know that these are all town facilities? Because obviously, like, police, library, I didn't realize what the fire one was until I got to that section, so that was good. Schools, like...
Right.
Someone's looking at that, they're gonna be like, well, there's all these other symbols and I'm not sure, are those town facilities or other?
There's plenty of space to add, right, so...
Or maybe just a circle without the, the school with the flag inside it.
Yeah, or we just make them all consistent, I don't know, pick one symbol and use them all the same one on this map if we just wanted to use one symbol, might be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, are there additional comments on pages six and seven, which is the dual maps? Okay, there are additional maps on, this initial map on page eight and then a, a bit of a grid here for priority.
I'm sorry, Tim, I don't hate to do this, surprise the head from now on, but going back to page seven.
That's fine.
And it ties, ties into the complete streets, which I was gonna mention later, but I noticed on this map, the six encourage walking, biking, and transit. Now that we have the community center or the senior center being built off of one forty, and Pete can attest to this, that's a very unsafe area that I, I think the six should be Route one forty, but I know that's a state highway, so maybe we'll restrict it as far as how much we can do with, with this master plan. But I always thought that the complete streets, walkable, should be included on one forty, that stretch going up.
Yeah.
As well as on this map, encourage walking and biking and transit to connect residents to open spaces, schools, and businesses. And now would be a convenient of the community center.
So add, add, add...
Add six on both sides.
Six on to...
Size of the reservoir, yeah.
Yeah, okay, we can do that. Because we can still, either through complete streets or through some other state funding sources, can identify Mansfield core sidewalk and, you know, bike improvements.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so we'll add that.
Awesome. Carry that thought over to the complete streets when we get to that slide.
Yeah, and just, as Kevin's mentioning, the community center, let's make sure, I have this noted throughout the document, probably missed some places, let's make sure we term that, not the senior center, but like the actual name, which is like senior center, community support center, throughout the whole document.
Right.
Because now that's really what we're constructing, it's not just for seniors, right? It's the community center, so let's make sure we term it one thing and make sure that term's used throughout the whole document, Paul.
Okay.
Okay. Again, on page eight and nine, we have another map on page eight with some additional goals. And then page nine, which shows kind of a priority grid by quadrant.
So on, on that one, Paul, I don't know if there's room or if it's gonna make it to, but it would be great to know the color codes again. You know how like each, each goal has a color? I don't know if we could put that someplace as a legend.
On the big...
On this one.
The annotation.
Yeah, like, I don't know if it...
Yeah, I'm not...
Or it might be too much, I don't know, it's just...
Yeah, no, I'm not disagreeing, Julie, I mean, I've debated on this slide.
I know.
I, I want, I left it in just as a, an illustration of...
I do like it like that.
Thought.
Yep.
But, you know, it's, it's, it certainly could be for each goal area, you would color code it. You know, that's, that, we could do that.
I like, I like it with the different colors.
Yeah.
What I was thinking is if like orange, land use, yellow, housing.
With these?
Blue, whatever.
Match it up with a future land use maps, just, it would be just the...
Just the colors of the vision plan? Right, exactly, just so that if I'm looking at it, I know all the yellows are for land use. I know all the greens are for open space and rec. Just when I look at it...
Just to carry the legend?
Yeah, just carry the legend. I don't want you to change the color or the layout. I think it's very impactful how it is because it really shows how we want to attack a lot of high priority items, like right out of the gate, it's actually really...
Really aggressive.
We're doing all of this. It's a lot on the top and a little on the bottom, which is not a bad thing.
A lot of it's on the, on the, if you look at the bottom, the left is flexible, the right is the more immediate. So we do have a lot that are immediate, and then as we knock those out, we would shift to the left.
Right.
And then down.
Yeah, I love how they're grouped through the boxes, I love how you can go in on the interactive PDF and click on them, that's awesome. I love the, all the rest of it. And overall, I think the report is very well, very well done and the graphics are great.
Yeah, they've done a good job with it.
Really, really good job.
Now, in terms of the placement of all these priorities and timings, does anybody have any specific comments to those?
So my only comment throughout the document is I know...
Not that we need to arrange our agendas for the next ten years?
No, I think, I, I had a hard time reading the blue boxes and knowing why something that was supposed to be done in twenty twenty-two wasn't high and immediate, but high and flexible. So I didn't know, Paul, if in your conversations with the team, had we thought about that? Like if we put a, a date in that blue box and we say twenty twenty-two, what does it mean when you say, well, that's not high and immediate, it's high and flexible?
Yeah, that, we were, I was trying to keep, so I focus primarily on, there were some areas I didn't focus on that I've asked other staff to take a look at.
Yeah.
So I didn't want to touch their prioritization, say environmental. So normally, like, the ones I focused on, which were land use, housing, economic development, services, when I saw that, I, I wanted, I shifted them or made them changes so that they would be high priority and immediate.
Right, because I think it needs to be...
Immediate, but maybe not a high priority.
Yeah.
Maybe not super, but it was still, the timing was, if it's twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, that to me is pretty immediate. So it, it's possible it was one that, another section from a, you know...
It could be, but I think we need to...
We need to be clear about that.
I think we need to scrub the blue boxes from a, just a strict timeline perspective to say from X to today, or today to X is immediate. If we don't want it to be immediate, then let's make it twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. Because I think that that is confusing to the reader when you look like, just for example, right, the first two, strategy one point, one point one is high and immediate, yet the date referenced, just for argument's sake, is twenty twenty-five. The next one, strategy one point, one point two, is high and immediate and that it's the end of twenty twenty-two.
And you know what probably happened too, Julie, is we've made changes in the text to it.
Right, I know you have, yeah.
So they're gonna have to go back and, you know, they probably are on this, but I'll make sure that they...
I just want it, like, when it goes to town meeting, you know, I want, I want there to be a really clear, like, I love that there are days in there, I love that it's like, you know, I'm all about, you know, measurable, you know what I mean? You know, getting to that goal. So I love that that's in there, I just want to make sure that we've got good consistency against where those four dots lie and what the text says. And that the correct staff agrees with what's in here, you know? Because if we're gonna be held to this, even though it's a vision document, I know it doesn't have chief, but this is something we're striving for, this is us putting our best foot forward, saying this is what we want to do in the town over the next decade, you know, fifteen years.
Right.
Then it really is a roadmap if we do it right. And I think we've got great foundation for that.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll just, I think this is probably an edit that they're going to go back and, and do after, but that's important, that we'll just make sure they get that, we get that clarified. And there may be some, I'm not, you know, with all the changes we've had now with personnel, I want to make sure that they are, with, particularly with those items that are falling under things like conservation or some other services like library that they've weighed in, the library weighed in, but it, it has to work for them. And so we want to make sure that they're on board with, that it works.
Right.
It's not a, you know, it's, like you said, it's not a, it's not written in stone. If we say twenty twenty-two and they don't start until twenty twenty-three, it's not like the plan becomes invalid. But we want this to be a work plan, we want this to be something that, you know, different groups, different teams can take forward and have some targets that they, that they set and can achieve.
Are all of the town departments that are impacted by this plan, have they all, have they all gonna review it and support and endorse it as well?
Well, they've all been given an opportunity to review it. I didn't ask... Well, they've all been given an opportunity to review it. Uh, I didn't ask, you know, for an official endorsement from them. I mean, I guess if you directed me to do so, they could. Uh, but, uh, we've, we've made changes based on feedback we've received from departments, but I need to make sure a few others have, who haven't responded, respond back. Like, does this work?
Well, I think it, reviewing it is good and getting their initial input and feedback and everything, but if you at least ask them to, you know, do you support this or do you endorse it, you know, they don't have to sign anything or anything, but at least something that would indicate that they're aware of it and they haven't just, you know, glossed over it and that they, they know that their name, their department is listed under multiple different steps and action items, you know.
Right. I'll still, you know, during this process, still have to work with a few of them to make sure. But the feedback we've had is very positive. Uh, no one has, you know, I take it as a good sign that no one, you know, that not, that a lot of departments haven't given us comments on it because we went, I've had meetings with them, we've gone through it. They seem to be fine with it, so.
Good. But obviously, obviously, our board doesn't have any authority over, you know, implementing a lot of these things through the town departments. Neither does the town meeting. So it can get approved through us in the town meeting, but it really comes down to, uh, you know, the town manager and the people under them.
Yeah, and that's been a focus on this plan is that we, we wanted, this plan needs to be implementable. Probably not even a word, but it needs to be implementable. And that's why we, we decided to go at the end of the plan with that, uh, that work plan spreadsheet. So that way people can, teams can then pick that and use that as a guide through work, uh, um, project management. You know, you can use it as a project management tool to help them figure out their act, identify their actions, know when they need to get things done, who they should be bringing in to help them do it. So we, we use that, the mindset of, uh, of, you know, a work plan.
Sounds good.
Paul, as we talk about bringing this before a town meeting potentially, I think that some of these items may be good as almost kind of a handout at town meeting as just like a high level, like this part, this hundred and whatever page plan is available for you to review. It's been available for a month. When we get up and speak at town meeting, uh, to have something simple and digestible to, uh, to look at is kind of a, this is kind of some near-term, medium-term, long-term projects that we've identified. And that can, I think, that's a way for people to.
Right.
Feel like they understand what's in the plan, even if somehow they didn't have a chance to read it.
Yeah, and I think one of the benefits of these initial pages is I think these are, can be that. They can, they can be that.
I think one page without any additional context is what I.
Yeah, yeah. A one pager is always good too. But here's the high level, this is what this plan seeks to accomplish.
Yes.
It would be good at town meeting also to, to note that, you know, all of the responsible parties that are noted throughout, have reviewed it and endorsed it and are in support of it as well because, you know, the concern of these things, as everybody knows, is they, they get done and they get put on a shelf and collect dust and whatever happens after it. They initially get approved by it, plenty more than the town. But one way to kind of take it to the next step is to make sure that they, everybody who's listed as responsible party knows that, you know, it's, the onus is on them to complete their portion of the master plan over time. So. And that would be a really great, uh, talking point at town meeting when it's presented.
Right. So, you know, the, um, the last plan, the 98 plan, it had a lot of great things in it, but it really was a policy plan. There wasn't anything you could look at and go, well, we now need to do this to, I mean, it said you needed to, uh, reclassify the zoning districts and then rezone it, but there weren't these work programs that came out of that plan. And master plans have changed since that time. And I think, again, this is a, uh, the implementation section of this plan really becomes a work program. So, um, you know, one of my goals, once this plan, even before this plan, is a lot of these things are already going on now. And so one of my goals is even before we get to town meeting, it's let's, let's start at least doing some of the preliminary work to get these things done. I mean, some of the priorities that'll be in my shop, I don't have to wait. I mean, there are certain steps I can't go beyond once, until it's approved, but we can start lining some things up to, you know, to make it, you know, to, uh, to start launching it quicker.
Absolutely, I agree. Anything further on those two pages at this point?
I need two more overarching comments, Paul, kind of while we're on general discussion. Can you make sure that it says select board, not Board of Selectmen in the whole document?
We changed all of that.
Oh, I definitely found a couple of references to it. That might have already happened. And then can we spell out all the acronyms and/or have an acronym glossary? Because even as I read it, I was getting confused. Cause I know different acronyms mean different things in my line of work and I'm sure that happens with other people. So either, let's just like sweep the whole thing and only.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like MVP, like, I mean, like there were a bunch of them that were in there, like some say, you know, I have a couple of other comments kind of in relation to that. But I think it would just be really helpful, like if this is supposed to be for public consumption.
Right.
We might wanna just forget the acronyms and just spell it out every time. So those are just two other overarching comments.
Yeah. No acronyms.
Not that I think, there's not a ton in here anyways.
Right.
And I think a lot of them have to do with like agencies for grants and things like that. Also, in some ways, it might just be easier to just spell it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't want the general public just guessing as to what that means.
Right, exactly.
I blew at least five acronyms a day, so. Okay. Anything further before we move on to land use?
So Julie's comment earlier kind of made me question. I know, I don't know if it's creating new content, but to map these on like a face timeline, like, is that possible? You know, so like in the, in the next three to five years, these are the ones that would be in action. You know what I mean? It's creating more content, which may be a little too late in the game, but I thought it maybe would be helpful for people to think about, okay, of all these items.
Yeah.
You know.
It's.
Which third of them are gonna be in the next few years?
It's very doable. That's, um, I was thinking actually that would be something we would just handle for the implementation teams.
Okay. Just cause, as she mentioned, some of them have dates, you know, so if there's a date in there.
And not all of them have dates, which is another comment I made out elsewhere in the document. I'm like, date, question mark, date, question mark?
And that's where we're waiting for people to tell us what.
Or that, um, priority attention, um, you know, bubble graph where it says requires media attention versus wish list. Maybe put, um, a generic timeline in that, you know, within five years or beyond 10 years or something like that.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, I mean, cause Kevin, that kind of goes along with my comment of like, if it's, if it's high and immediate, are those all things that have like a 2022 date on them? And if it's high and flexible, is that like 2022 through 2024? Or 2025?
Yeah.
Cause I, I do think there needs to be some consistency, since we do put dates in it, which is a good thing in my opinion, just on kind of how they break out.
That's a good way of doing it too. It's just put like a bubble there that says, in this quadrant, this should be kind of in the next zero to two years, you know, and then maybe the high priority, the top left one is like.
Two to five, right?
Two to five, yeah. Just as a gauge.
Right.
So that when someone looks at it, they can say, oh, I wanna read these ones, cause this is the content that is in action now and coming, right? And that will probably also help us prioritize, you know, when we, you know, a post-election, when the board gets together, just to quickly review, hey, what is, what's in the bubble now that we should be making sure we're working through?
Okay.
If there's a simple way of doing it without, you know, obviously creating something.
The bottom ones would be, you know, five years and beyond.
Right, yeah, something like that, Paul, right?
Right.
Those are things that you're looking at from like 2026 and on.
Right. You know, five to 10 years, probably, five year, beyond five years.
Yeah, yeah, okay. You know, even if it's, uh, like a watermark in the background.
Right. Well, we can, they have space to add that.
Okay.
Okay. Next is land use. So we're in goal number one. Uh, so we have.
Page 11, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. Page 11. So we have kind of interaction page and then we dive into goal 1-1, which is modernizing the town's zoning bylaw to meet the town's priorities on growth and preservation.
So, Paul, in watching the last week, the last meeting we had when Tim and I weren't here, so the zoning la, language, is that all set now? That's been approved by the AG?
Uh, it was, the October town meeting, which includes Village Center Core, has been approved. Marijuana is supposed to be approved very soon.
So, yeah, is the reference to the zoning language underscore and with the one, is that applied to both? Or just Village Center Core? Cause that's what we're talking about in this strategy.
Specific to Village Center Core.
All right. So then, does it still need to be incorporated into the existing code pending review by regulatory boards?
Now, this is actually just, this one's really focusing on us, um, implementing not just the, the, the district, but, I mean, not just the language of the zoning, but also other initiatives that we're working on.
Oh, okay, okay. Cause I was like, is this all set now? That's what my question is. All set now, question mark?
Yeah, but you read later that promoting it is also, you know, working to educate people on what that all means too. So people, businesses in that district.
Yeah, and then the only other comment I made on this one, and maybe this isn't the right place for it or maybe someplace else, I said, you know, when we met Alan and myself and Orin at the time and Scott, when we went through all of that, we had always thought about, we had a lot of discussion over the parcels. Remember that we put it in the first go around? So I don't know if it's worth mentioning someplace, at least our initial idea was always to go and review it again to see if it needed to be expanded, to have that touch point to go back.
So that, that gets to some other goals.
Yeah.
That we talk about, that where should we be prioritizing, um, you know, like, you know, zoning changes and even infrastructure improvements to help spur development in an area. So that's definitely, uh, that's one of the later goals.
Yeah, so I just think it's good to maybe put in there someplace that that, there's always been like that thought of having that touch point back to the VCC about. You know, if we get a home run, you know, in the half a dozen or so parcels that we identified and we're like, oh my God, this is working, we'd like to include, you know, we'd like to expand it. And always had been our intention to like, you know, at some future date, look at it at, to expand that core.
Yeah, yeah.
If needed or applicable or wanted.
Right, right. So you're right on. And, and again, that'll, I think that one's coming up.
Yeah, and I, I'm writing down things as I'm reading it, Paul, so you write that might.
Right.
Be more applicable on another, you know, strategy or board. Just a place where I noted it.
So Julie, that was on page 12, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that was on 12.
Okay.
Sorry, I jumped.
Yeah.
They're 11 and 12 are next to each other in theory.
I won't give you all my little ones, like space here. I'll give all those to Paul.
I do not think we need to review typos in committee.
Nope, exactly.
Is there anything, uh, going back to page 11 that we wanted to discuss in terms of the overview in terms of land use?
And if anyone has a question about what a transfer of development rights is.
I assumed we were gonna get there.
I didn't, and I read it, I was like, oh, I answered my question.
Yeah, you do.
The only other thing I had on page 11, or I had two pieces, uh, I didn't know if the order of these six bullets mattered. Performing the code diagnosis. You know, is there, is there a, a, a means to why these are in this order or should that be done sooner?
Uh, they weren't, they weren't put in order priorities.
Okay, okay.
So you would refer then to the action to, you know, when prioritization matrix.
Gotcha.
To determine it.
Scott, I was gonna say the same thing. The goal 1.1 is modernize the town zoning bylaw, but performing the code diagnosis is a priority low. And the only thing in the priority low.
Okay, so I think I.
That's our highest priority.
I know, so I think I commented on.
And it should almost be done before you change any use statutes, you know?
So it's a high priority, but it's, we're just kind of figuring out when, when do we do it?
But it's listed as low and immediate, Paul.
And it's the only one in the low and immediate category.
It's, it's, it's really setting the baseline for what's.
That, that hasn't been updated because I moved that.
You changed that? Okay, 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 yeah. So in, in the 3.6 version, which I think is what most of us are working off of, that says, and I put a question mark next to that, low, question mark, like to Alan's point. I was like, yikes.
It's not, it's, yeah, it's higher.
Okay, all right.
I just don't know when we will get to that, so I, I just thought, let us get a little more flexibility.
You're giving yourself all high things to do, Paul.
As soon as you write a grant for it.
Cause everything we do in planning is high priority.
I know, I know.
But these are, you know, we've already been collecting, myself, Nick, uh, you know, our building commissioner, Chris, when he was building commissioner, every time we have something that comes across our desk and we look at the code and we're like, what does this even mean? Or why is this like this? Or what's missing? We've been making notes and we've got pages and pages of fixes.
Is it, is this a folder with lots of squares in it? Is that what the folder is?
Acronyms. We use acronyms to, you know, it's our code, it's our special code, but, you know, things like, um, anyway, we won't go into that, but there, you know, you all deal with these little perks of the, of the bylaw.
Yeah.
And we just wanna be able to put those out there. But there are some more immediate things that we'd like to do, like what Julie's mentioning about, you know, do we extend Village Center Core? Well, do we, you know, that, you know, where we feel like, you know, it's time to strike, that's probably a bigger priority than, than going back and fixing up wonky things in the code. So, you know, whether it's, whether it's extending Village Center Core or doing Village Center Core light or one of the options we talked about here is an overlay in some areas. So, um, you know, I think that's gonna be a, a high priority that we can do short-term.
Okay.
TDR, transfer development rights is, I'm not a fan, but we left it in there as an option. So, um, I, I understand some communities have successfully used these, that program, but I know many that have the program and have never done anything with it, so.
Me too, Paul.
Yeah.
Same with you.
The goal is to evaluate the feasibility, so it is not a.
And you can, you can jettison something if you want. That one wouldn't upset me a whole lot if we didn't do TDRs, but.
Okay.
Again, if other communities have done it successfully, you know, maybe we, we just leave it in there and look at it later.
So if anything else on 11 or 12? Soon see a chat coming in, Paul, if you want to.
Oh, okay.
I believe from Chris.
And Chris can, would you rather hear him or? I agree with Paul. The goals of this master plan are specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, realistic and time-bound and smart. Serpentin, Paul provided a laser focus and creating a framework for the plan. I didn't pay him for this. But I'll get him a beer soon. Uh, there are many tools for the planning board toolkit inserted throughout the master plan. Some may be used extensively, but others may be there just in case a need arises. Very true. The more tools recognized as available for consideration through the master plan, the more approaches to addressing evolving community need, uh, evolve, uh, to address evolving community needs are at your disposal.
Okay. Well, thank you, Paul, for reading that. Okay. Again, we're looking at, so. Page 11, 12, if we're good to move on, then I will continue to move on. And I guess I'll include page 13, which is a map across from 12.
Yeah, 13, um, doesn't seem to be updated. Like, I know Leonard Street has no data, all white, whereas we know that's industrial. And across the street, we just, um, you know, change it to industrial, so. Some of this, some of.
Some of this, some of the, more of this may need to be, like, edited or at least checked-
Yeah.
For accuracy. There's a lot of, a lot of colors here, and sometimes the more detail, unless it's 100% accurate, it can be confusing. Like, I don't know what institutional is. Originally, I thought it was public buildings and schools, but there are a lot of blue areas. So I don't know what institutional means.
Yeah, I, one of the, I'm making a note for them to update it to the latest that they have. One of the challenges of maps and data is it becomes obsolete very quickly. One of my hopes, though, is that while it may be obsolete in the plan, that we continue to use our website to have the most up-to-date data on it, especially with the new census data coming out or as maps get updated. A lot of times, these are interactive maps, so they can get updated in real time. I think that's a, that's a, you know, obviously, the plan needs to have the maps in it, and it's a snapshot of the, of conditions at the time the plan was adopted. But as we go forward, having a much better data presence on our websites will really help us and the community go forward.
Well, that, that, I completely agree, but we're asking the town to approve this in October.
Right.
That was rezoned over two years ago. So it should be updated, the date that we presented to the town. You know, obviously-
Right.
It changes all the time, but. There may be a footer that has the HTML to the latest, you know? Cause people are gonna look at it.
I don't know if we can count on that not changing.
Really? Okay.
In 10 years?
Well, it will change, and, and that's why we should have, we need to really have a robust-
Scott was saying link to the current page in the document.
Well, like, if you click down the HTML, you go to the most recent land use map, even if it's different than this image.
But I don't know if we would have a dedicated permalink for that.
Yeah.
Cause is that the map GAS? It's just the obvious ones, right?
Right.
You're gonna be discarded right away. Somebody says, oh, wait a second, I thought we rezoned Leonard Street and industrial like, two and a half years ago, and it shows white, and then you're gonna lose credibility.
So, yeah, so this is, yeah, see, this is where maps can get confusing, because you're right, we rezoned it. This was just, this is an actual current use of land. So the white, in some cases, would be vacant.
It's not a zoning map, but-
It's not a zoning map.
Yeah, it's a land use map.
It should show industrial, cause they have three buildings there already, so.
Well, this was a 2020, and sometimes the data, oftentimes the data lags behind.
Okay, well.
No, I mean, I wanna make sure that this is, you know, that we still have the most up-to-date going forward, or, or change this map to something else. I mean, it almost makes sense. But I need to go back and look, cause, you know, does the current map really matter? Or should we be looking at, you know, the current, you know, the current zoning map?
Actually, this says made in 2021.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
But I don't know when the data, the data, a lot of it might be, but I'll, I'll check on this.
Do you know what blue is? Like, what is institutional? Cause a good part of the land use is institutional.
Well, college.
College, town, mascot.
Can't work too much here. There's a lot of blue even for-
Yeah. I'll, I'll find out more, cause it does seem like that's more than what's actually out there. But I'll, I'll see if, what, what else they may be picking up on it. Or, you know, do we even need to keep this?
I don't know if it matters, it says Norton Master Plan 2020 here. The title of the document's 21. Well, combine some, you know, combine some of the colors too, cause some of them are very close.
Yeah.
You know, to make it simpler. All residential rather than apartments being broken out, or mixed use and office being broken out, you know, whatever. I mean, this is interesting. It's just that you have to spend some time on it.
Yeah.
As we write to.
It is, but it's still just a snapshot of our past. And, you know, we want people to be, you know, we need to know our past, but we really wanna be focusing on future.
Well, it's a, it's a baseline.
Yeah, exactly.
Some people like to make sure that the baseline and what we know today to be true is accurate before they approve a future plan. Because it's like, if you can't tell me, you know, if your calculation doesn't give me the right number that we know to be true, how am I gonna believe your formula going forward?
Fortunately, well, that's a great point, and we don't wanna lose people on that. Yep.
Okay. Is there anything further on one? On, yeah, close to page 12 and 13 as the pair. Okay. 14 and 15. We have another map here, but this is just the zoning map. And we're looking at 1.1.2, which is updating the use tables. My favorite part of the zoning bylaw.
That needs work.
There are a lot of uses we don't have.
Okay, did we have any specific comments on 1.1.2?
Not specific to this, but is it worth trying to figure out as we go on to how many of these we're gonna have to take to town meeting? And how many would we actually be able to put at one town meeting? You know what I'm saying?
Depends how long you want town meeting to be.
That's exactly right. How many, would you put six, six zoning articles at town meeting? I would think so.
I'd put seven, it's a lucky number.
Okay.
No, that's gonna be something for the teams, and I'll, as, as these, the items that are, that fall under planning, we'll have to work those through and actually figure out the reality of what are we going to bring to town meeting? Because you're right, we don't wanna be bringing three or four. Some of these are big changes. I mean, this is, this could be, these are going to be uses that, like, when we had our conversation over the DOT property, we don't have specific, like, life sciences in there. I mean, this should be when we spell those things out. That's not, that's not a quick discussion, right, so.
You need to have a listening session, and then you need to try and incorporate it, and then you need to, yeah.
Right.
This is like one thing that we take. This is like, could be the only thing.
Right.
It is really hard to digest that, the use tables.
And we have so few uses in our use tables.
Well, remember when we started to try to expand it, and that just got-
Right.
So ugly so quick.
Right, right, and-
Just the last time when we tried to do that with all those housing elements, Paul, I mean-
And the senior housing.
Right, and, and that was just housing, but-
I know, I know, I know.
Industrial and commercial uses that we actually don't spell out in our bylaw, so, yeah, so, we're going to have to be realistic as we go forward as to what could actually, again, thinking about it from a project management perspective, you know, what can we, what can we move forward with first? When do we expect it to go to town meeting? And then bring others along at appropriate times.
Well, and I think that's, that's where it's, I love that it has like these success stories in it. I'll make a comment that I like to see local examples, not like, I know on one of them, it said like Seattle/Washington. I was like, all right, well, we could probably get rid of that, cause we already have like Plymouth and Carver, and like, things like that, Falmouth. Because these are places where we could say, maybe Medford's a good example or not for this one, but we can say, okay, this is what the other town used. This is how we did it. They, you know, we mimicked it, we personalized it for Norton this way. Like, having those say, okay, we're not the only municipality to do this. We're not making it up. It's not a new process, you know what I mean? So like, I love that that's a part of the blue boxes, because I think that helps us when we go to tackle each one of these to say, okay, what went great in this? What's the lessons learned? How can we apply that to Norton?
Right.
Okay. Additional comments to text or graphics for 14 and 15?
Well, the map will need to be updated now that we have VCC.
Um, as well as the Cross and Leonard Street too, they can also fix that to industrial.
Oh, right, right.
Would the overlay district be part of the zoning map, or is it not? That's maybe a silly question.
Uh, it is part of it, so, right, so, VCC and-
Just like the water resource protection district, it's the same thing.
Marijuana.
Marijuana, VCC, yeah.
That map's starting to get very busy.
At least if not colored pencil.
Right.
On page 14, what is a gold bio-ready community? I didn't look it up.
Oh, uh, on page 14?
Yep.
So the state has, there's Mass Bio. They have tiers by which you can qualify for how ready you are to accept life science company. We are currently at gold, which means our, essentially, our zoning allows for it. We are seeking platinum, because we have, you know, there's still some areas of blue star that are vacant that could be moved into. And as they go forward with Phase 2, presumably, some of those buildings could also be readily available for life sciences. So we're waiting to hear back from, from Mass Bio to see if we are platinum, but we're, we think we've met it. It's, it's an incentive. It's telling, so it's, so Mass Bio, and in fact, we're, the town manager and I are speaking on Friday with the Life, uh, Massachusetts Life Sciences Center to talk about Norton, to talk about how can we help promote these types of businesses? So if we're able, they already emailed us, that's great, you're, you're gold. And we wanna be able to say, we think we're platinum, and, you know, once we become platinum, they can partner with us to go, when, when they hear from a company who wants to, say, move to Massachusetts, they can go, you need to check Norton. You need to reach out, we'll reach out, we'll coordinate, so.
Or on the shortlist.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of gold, right.
Any other programs besides bio-ready communities that are out there?
In terms of, in other industries?
Yeah, other industries to try and-
There are. I mean, there's tech, right? There's, there's, it's primarily in the technology sector and, and life sciences. And for us too, it's also warehousing. In fact, I was on a presentation, I saw a presentation today that, what's the booming economy in Massachusetts? It's life sciences, it's tech, and industrial, and down at the bottom still is office and retail. So we, you know, we're trying to, part of this is helping ourselves define who we are. What are our strengths? So we know logistics is something that we're, that we have as a strength, considering our access to 495 and some other things. We have Alnylam though, which is a, can help us attract, we can, if, you know, we should be leveraging them to help get other companies, similar companies. In fact, I have a call-
Biotech companies love to be near other biotech companies.
Right, right. So we have that call on Friday with Mass Life Sciences, and then Thursday I have a call with someone from Alnylam. Basically, that question, what can we do to help? Who do you want here? What can we do? Just so we get a sense of what are the changes that we might need to make to promote these businesses.
Okay. Anything further on these two pages? I feel like I've said that 15 times already, but I'm gonna keep saying it, cause-
We can always go back if we level something, right? We've got three, four more meetings to do that.
Okay. If we're done with that, we'll move on to pages 16 and 17, which is the TDR section. Does everybody understand what a TDR is now? Or Paul, do you wanna give a short version in layman's language?
Yeah, it's, it's a program that, in theory, what it's trying to do is remove development rights from, say, environmentally sensitive areas or areas you don't want growth, and direct those allocations to areas where you want to see growth. So you'll have a sending area and a receiving area. So for example, we might want to take an area where there's an extensive amount of wetlands and reallocate those, that entitlement to an area, say, 123 or 140. So it's, so that's, that's the intent behind it, is to move entitlements out of areas where you want to not grow into areas where you do want to grow.
So you, so an owner of land that we want, that wanted to be protected would be able to sell their build points to somebody else in another area?
Right.
Okay.
That's what, that's what a TDR attempts to do. And it's a lot more complicated than that.
Oh, I, I believe it.
I just, my belief, my belief is if you want an area to grow, give the base zoning what it, what it needs to accomplish it. But if you wanna go beyond, some communities have successfully done this, where they say, well, at minimum, in an area where we want growth, we want this amount of zoning. But if you're willing to do, provide all these public amenities, then we would put, say, using an overlay district, you could then achieve a higher level of entitlements, because you've given a higher level of public amenities. That's not what a TDR does.
Yeah.
Paul, is there a comment in the chat? Is that why it's lit up orange?
There, I think it's been lit up orange since Chris's comment, but-
Uh, well, let's check and see. Nope.
Yeah, I think it's been lit up that way, the, since, uh, since Chris's made, had made his comment earlier. So, does anybody have any specific comments about 1.1.3? Paul obviously has some feelings about it. One, two. Keep it as is, as a potential tool, even if we, the, and the, the strategy is evaluate the feasibility, so it's not like we're throwing this into the fire right away, but. Silence's consensus as leaving it in place for now?
Yeah, I mean, it's low, it's flexible, it's not, you know, begin by the end of 2028. I mean, it, it's a tool. I mean, it's absolutely a tool.
Timeline wise, it's at the end of the master plan, right? The last third, if you will.
Yep.
So. Good with it. Dead by then.
Okay.
Never know, right? We'll be overtaken by the swamp.
Zombies.
By zombies. And water's rising.
Okay, so, the next pages are, the pair is text-heavy of 18 and 19, which has 1.1.4, 1.1.5, and 1.1.6. So why don't we take those one at a time?
Okay.
So the first one is 1.1.4, which is encourage accessory dwelling units and smaller housing typologies. So, accessory apartments. Paul, this is something that we attempted to address a few, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, we've tried this, right? Didn't, didn't Paul?
Not really, no.
Oh, was it just, was it just accessory structure?
Structure.
Yeah, but this is different. This is, so, right in this room, we, well, in this area, when we had our, our info session on housing, a number of people who spoke said, we're aging. Some of us are still much younger, don't have to worry about that. But we're aging in place, we'd love to stay in Norton, but I, we don't want to stay in our large house on a large lot, cause that's just a lot of work, so people wanna downsize. So people did talk about, you know, the opportunity to have, you know, smaller types of housing and housing options, so which accessory dwelling units and smaller houser typology, smaller housing typologies would introduce- typology, small, smaller housing typologies would introduce new uses that we don't currently have, because we basically treat a triple, a triplex the same as three hundred units, because we just call it multifamily. So, what we could do through here is start creating new uses, like, you know, a three-unit, a quad, and, you know, identifying where they could go, identify the dimensional standards for it, whereas right now, we don't do any of that. And other things, like, right now, we interpret our code to say, "An accessory apartment has to be attached, not detached." So, you can't legally build, say, a garage apartment, or a, you know, what they call a granny flat or a mother-in-law flat. That's not allowed in our bylaw, and those can be great uses, especially when we have such large lots. But again, that would have to go through the whole process of spelling out, but that's what this is trying to achieve.
Okay. Any specific comments on that page, or move on to number five?
So, Paul, I just had a, had a question on, on this one. I, I don't know, this is kind of overall. I know some of these are, like, connected, like, complementary actions. Is it worth repeating the blue boxes? Because, like, this has no blue box.
Uh, it's just missing a thing.
Oh, it should, it should be there.
Okay.
Blue box.
Yeah, no blue box.
Maybe it dropped off the column because of that last little bit of the, it just dropped off the text box?
Yeah, no, that, they should be consistent.
Okay, there's a couple other places where that happened, so, I think I've noted most of them where I saw it, Paul, but just like for scrubbing, blue box under everyone, yeah.
Yeah, well, I've got that note, um, you know, it's probably, you know, sometimes this is an error with, with using InDesign or Publisher. It pushes it down too far.
Yeah.
But, great, well, we'll get, we'll get that.
Okay. So, we have one dot one dot five, which is Create a User-Friendly Development and Permitting Guide to Facilitate All Sides of Housing and Business Development. And one dot one dot six, it's Form a Code Diagnosis to Resolve Any Issues with the Current Zoning Bylaw. So, I think they're pretty straightforward. Is there anything we wanted to discuss on those pages, on those two points? Otherwise, we'll move on to goal one dash two. Which is Encouraging Compact Mixed Use for Larger-Scale Commercial Development at Key Locations. And again, this is page twenty and twenty-one. And there's, on twenty-one, there are a few specific, uh, height, areas noted with some purple hashing there.
Right, and this gets to Julie's point earlier about, um, prioritizing areas where we do want to see economic development. And one of the ways we would do that is, you know, whether we decide to just do, add some, you know, base zoning districts, or, uh, another proposal would be an overlay district that, again, if they meet criteria, uh, they, they would be able to do something in addition to the base zoning. And I think it's really important, we say standards. There were, we debated whether or not to use guidelines. And like, no, guidelines mean they have no teeth.
Yeah, that sounds way too flexible.
It's way too flexible, and rather, we just, I think it's better for the town if we actually put standards in that people can see are predictable, they'll know what it looks like, um, rather than, rather than guidelines. We have guidelines in our bylaw that nobody uses, right? We have design guidelines for Village Commercial that...
I was just gonna say, like, that, that, that commercial core, we even played with that. Remember, Paul, in talk, in our meetings with that, was like, you know, how far do we go with those thoughts on public spaces, and then do we say, "They all have to have the same bench," right? Like, that, that's what we're getting at, at this, is that the look and the feel of the town is consistent.
Right, right. And accommodates that, the area that it's in.
Right, yeah.
Like, Village Center Core might not be the zoning district if we go north on Mansfield Avenue up towards the reservoir. It might be too intense in some cases, so, um, but it gives us something to work with. But that's what this is striving for, that it's really just focused on these areas that, you know, we need to pick and choose where we think the growth is, where we would like to see the growth go, and also where we think it might be happening.
Okay. Any comments about one dash two?
The, the map, the one online that I downloaded, you have the link on, on the Plentywood website, is a little different. It doesn't have the non-residential zoning in parentheses, so it color codes all the way up and down, one forty and one twenty-three. I don't know which one is the correct one to use, but, um, probably the one that's printed that you gave is just the correct one, because you don't want to include residential properties, right?
Right.
But the one online looks like this. The link to the surface site that you put online.
Same as the one that's up there.
Oh, okay.
Yes, same with that one. Which does, I don't think that's the one we want to use for the final, right?
Right, I mean, this, this is focusing on all the commercial and industrial areas, no residential.
Yeah.
I mean, there may, there'd be residential units in this area, but they're not zoned residential.
That's right.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, just make sure that the right one gets used for the final.
Yeah.
Paul, we don't have the existing non-conforming lots anymore.
None.
I don't even know what that term means.
We never talked about that, right, Alan?
Never.
Okay.
Well, I think these are residentially zoned, it's just that...
Just that they're on the corner.
Oh, some of them are, you're right, you're right, some of them are.
Right.
But we, you know, we'd have to make a decision, like, on Taunav, I mean, that those are property, there were properties zoned residential there, do we keep them residential, do we see commercial? But again, this is many years trying to determine, you know, we, we really want to take a look at one or two priority areas and look at, at, at both the zoning...
Yeah, understood.
And follow up with, all right, water sewer, where are you putting your sewer lines?
But for now, make sure that this is not used, because somebody who has a residentially zoned property in one forty, one twenty-three, you know, it's gonna be alerted, it's gonna be, like, "What are you doing? You taking my residential permit, you calling it an economic development site?"
Might want to use just maybe arrows, like, to say, "These are the corridors, maybe, Paul, instead of picking the parcel lines out." I don't know, if you just want to, like, lift it up a little bit. Food for thought. I mean, you could definitely keep the VCC in there, right? And the key parcels, but then maybe we do, like, just arrows, like, up and down the corridor, I don't know. That way, someone's not, "Oh, my God, that's my house right there that's now shaded." Like, don't count its weight.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we ready to move on to housing on page twenty-three? There are two goals under the housing, two sub-strategies under the housing goals section. One is Provide More Affordable Income-Restricted Housing, and the second one is Build a Range Market Rate Housing to Meet the Demands of Young Families, the Senior Population, and First-Time Homebuyers. Any on this intro page, or should we dive into the specific goals themselves?
What, one quick thing, I have a question on Paul, for the 2020 census, what, when is that data coming out?
There's preliminary data out now, but they've, it, it should be out by this fall or winter.
Okay, all right, so we'll get to a town meeting before the new...
I would expect so.
Okay, all right, I'm just kind of thinking, like, you know, just because we, this is like one of the places where it's referenced, and then in reference to forty B, which, I don't know if now that we passed, or if those two developments are taking place, does that mean we'll even meet the ten percent in 2020? But we might just not know that until we get the final last data.
Right, we don't know. We just, we just submitted the decision for the forty B at two fifty-three last week. We're now at over eleven percent.
If they build it.
If they build it.
Good designation.
But we're there now, right now, we're at eleven percent.
Okay. All right, then the text is good, because we're not quite sure where we're gonna...
Right, and again, that's going to be a moving target.
Yep, okay.
And we certainly have a goal of increasing that number, um, quite a bit. And, you know, one of the goals that we have, talking with the Housing Authority, is especially, trying to promote deeper affordability, because if you looked at the rates for the forty Bs that we've approved, I'd have a hard time paying for it. It's not much less than my mortgage payment. And the, it was a pretty stunning number of, of people on the waiting list for, for the Norton Housing Authority. It was like seven thousand people on that waiting list. So, that's, of course, picking up an entire region, it's not all Norton, but the people who are living there, that's the deepest affordability, that's the poorest people, but they're not affording a forty B.
It's not low income, it's affordable, which is, what, twenty percent below market value or something?
Basically.
Which today is still a lot of money.
It's a lot. I mean, some of these are twelve hundred a month and up.
Wow.
And that's acceptable, acceptable by the state. But, you know, we, we need to be much more mindful of the people making much less than that and diversifying our housing, so that's one of the goals we have here, a big one.
That's good. Anything on the intro page further? Or do you want to dive into goal two dash one? Which would be pages twenty-four and then the corresponding map on page twenty-five.
So, Paul...
This is another one of those maps that has all the outlines drawn out.
Yeah.
Right.
So, the map, I think, it was really hard to see single-family versus two to three-family, at least in my printed copy. Those yellows are just tough.
The scale is just too, too small.
Also, in the example success stories, I don't know if there's, like, any of our neighboring towns have done an HPP that we might want to just reference in that paragraph? I know, like, across the state, there's a lot, but if, for example, Mansfield, Foxborough, I don't know, like, if someone close to us, we could just put that reference in, would be great. And then above that, in the performance measures, it says secure grant funding. And this, I haven't been through the whole planet, and this might be biting off way more than we can choose, so you can slap my hand when I say this, but are we identifying anywhere grants that are available for any of these goals or strategies? Okay.
We will, and this program, the Housing Production Plan, and the Housing Choice Program have grants tied to them. Our challenge, as I mentioned two weeks ago, is our, our capacity to do this. You know, we have the people at the Housing Authority, but their primary job is to run day-to-day operations. By the charter, I am the housing person as well, and we are going to have to look at bringing in partners to help us achieve these very needed goals. I'll do what I can to help out, but as you, you saw just in the first chapter alone, what, what we're, what we're going to be doing, this is, and, and that work overlaps with this, certainly, accessory dwelling units.
Right.
We'll help achieve some of these things, but, you know, we, we, you know, we, we just have to build capacity. I mean, it's a scary thing right now, but, for example, Conservation, if you haven't heard, our Conservation Director, now working in a new town.
Easton.
Easton.
Who was that?
Jennifer Lino.
After twenty-something years.
Yeah.
Well, I'm bringing it up just as an example of, there's nobody there right now, and we're working to get someone, I think we have an admin going in. That's a scary thing. When I, again, when I started, there was nobody there. And, you know, we've lost twenty years of institutional knowledge over there, and, um, this is just another example of that, that we're, we're lacking the, the capacity, in some cases too, the, you know, the expertise to help make these happen. But, the good news is, you know, there are, there may be, Group Serpent, for example, has a housing program that might be able to help us get this launched.
Yeah, and I think it's important, like, like, when you say secure grant funding that, like, it's good, it's good for the public to realize that, like, there's so many different grants out there, for so many different goals and strategies that we have listed here, Paul.
Right.
And it can be scary when someone's gonna look at this and be like, "How are we paying for all of that?" That it's good that there's like a, kind of correlating, like, okay, like, we could apply for this grant.
Right.
It's a, it's a ninety-twenty, or an eighty-twenty, a ninety-ten, or whatever the case may be, to show that this isn't all gonna come out of your pocket, right? Like...
Right, uh, right, we always are looking for grants, so even with some of the zoning bylaw changes, there are grant opportunities that the state will pay for providing consulting services.
Right, consulting services.
And some is gonna be us, you know?
Right, some will be staff time, of course, but I think it's just good to say, you know, there's a lot in here, it's in a good digestible form, and then if there is that kind of implementation and, and grant funding element, I don't know if that's in the tables in the back, I haven't gotten that far, guys, but, but I think it's just really great to have that identify what opportunities are out there for grants.
Yeah.
Because it just shows that there, there's a lot of ways to get help, and there is money out there, you just have to know how to access it.
Right, right.
These towns that have full-time grant writers generate much more than what they're paid and what they bring into the town, several towns around here that have, full-time.
Yeah, do you have a good grant writer? Oh, my God, yeah.
They can generate...
They'll play their salary over twice, easy, yeah.
Four towns will put a line item into contract with grant writers.
Yep.
Yeah, some towns, there's, especially now, with American Rescue or Recovery Plan, it's, there are billions of dollars out there for a lot of different programs.
Paul, should the Housing Authority be your responsible party for this at all? I'm not sure if they're officially...
Yeah, hey, we're in here.
Yes, we are.
If I wasn't...
But they, yeah, they should be, um, I thought we caught that, but I will, again, I think we caught them on the spreadsheet, but, uh, this stuff will need to be updated at the end. I'm sure they're waiting just to get the spreadsheet done and then go back. But I will make that note.
That seems like a two-screen job, document on one side, spreadsheet on the other.
Yes, exactly, yep, 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 my great...
They should code it.
Side, side by side.
When one thing changes, the other automatically changes.
Yep.
Okay.
Make sure you tap into, we can college to Paul, in case there are any, you know, co-op internship, work-study opportunities there, with people that can help you write grants that might be studying, you know, public policy or...
Yeah, that's a great point, that's a great point.
I don't know if they can handle the commute to town hall.
Need some interns, Paul.
Yep, we do.
Okay. Anything else on first part of, or two dot one dot one, or should we move on to two one two, which is Housing Choice Initiative? And it's, again, it's a consider participation in the initiative program, not a quote-unquote, not that this has a mandate to it, but does not say definitively to join, it says consider.
I just added select for to responsible parties since they're mentioned in the performance measures.
You're going to be measured on this, but you're not responsible for it.
Yep. Need to foster support with us, so, we'll add them to a responsible party.
This is a, a great program, the state launch, and there is a lot of money to help construct development, but, yeah, there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
And that ties a lot into, ties into one of the other items, which was the accessory apartment?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yes.
Literally one of the first best practices there, so... Okay. Uh, and there is a, um, depiction there of different ADUs.
Is there any way we can get something that's local? I wrote anything from the East Coast.
I think we just stole the graphic from them, I think that's what it is.
And then you need the blue box under two point one point three.
Okay.
I'll have that in my notes that I give you, Paul. I will keep up with that, but any place I saw that missing, I kind of just noted it.
Maybe in just the caption, say, "Graphic from City of St. Paul." So, it's not like, just, just giving them credit for the graphic, rather than, to Julie's point, like, "Why is this from Minnesota?" why is this from Minnesota? It's nice little graphic, so.
Yeah, it's a great graphic. My boss has me trained, like, he is always like, something from the East Coast, something from the East Coast, something that's like close to us, like, not, you know, the Pacific, you know, or, you know what I mean? So like, he's been great at me.
Well, this area has plenty of examples of accessory dwelling units. That's what we've done for hundreds of years. So, but it's a good example.
It is.
I don't want.
It's a good illustration.
Right, exactly. You know, we're bad.
Okay. So alongside that graphic also has 2.1.3, which is Adopt the Community Preservation Act, again, for affordable housing.
Just a note there that a couple of years ago, the town had an effort going to start the CPA program, but it didn't go anywhere. So.
Was it just lost in a mob of competing priorities?
Yeah, I think so. We weren't involved with it, but it, yeah, it kind of stopped. So we were debating, do we use it? Just, we put this just as a flexible timeframe. There's really a lot of good benefits that come out of this, if we adopt it. Money goes to, parts of it go to affordable housing, but others go to open space and recreation.
Okay. Anything further? We should move on to 2-2 on page 28 and 29. Which talks about building a range of market rate housing to meet the demands of young families, the senior population, and first-time home buyers. With the first sub-bullet there, incentivize the production of smaller units on less land through zoning updates and by innovating zoning bylaws. And thank you for the callbacks to the previous items.
Yep. And a blue box is missing.
Yes. And 2.2.2, which is Senior Housing Development and Promoting Aging in Community Strategies. Is that supposed to be a double dash word? It might be. Aging-in- community?
I don't know.
It's like aging in place is taking me back to past job copyrighting. Anything further on this page here? We should keep moving on to the next set of pages, which does have the blue box. I know you were looking for it, Julie.
Oh, yeah, don't worry. I got a note to throw up a doc.
I feel like there should be other responsible parties for this, but I'm not sure who. The Council on Aging runs the senior and everything.
Yes.
There's nothing in terms of, Housing Authority maybe?
Yeah.
I would take the Housing Authority to be the. Okay. Anything further on this page, or half a page, on page 30? And then pretty picture? I have no comments in the picture, so.
Next page, not a very pretty picture, but we're working on it.
Yes, I would agree with that.
We're getting there, Paul.
Is that an up-to-date picture of what that looks like? What they do soon?
Uh, no, that was, no, there's been a lot of improvements.
That's what I'm saying. That's a really up-to-date picture.
Yeah, but this was part of the drone shots they did a couple of years ago, so. It's a great photo.
It's okay, we'll look at that.
Yeah. Photo's worse now, a lot of it is.
Okay.
Well, we're still, well, anyway, we're hoping to apply for some demolition funds.
So Economic Development, we have introductory page on page 33. Anything there from an overview before we dive into the two large deal strategies here? One of which has two bullets, sub-bullets, and one of which has eight? Otherwise, I'll dive right into 3-1.
Want to prove Tiff's little sub comment?
Hey, is that you laughing over there, Paul?
I just thought that was a humorous comment.
Yeah. Is there a special town meeting coming up, by the way?
There is.
There is.
August 9th!
August 9th.
August 9th, special town meeting in Olympia. I'm going to be there!
I couldn't find it online on the Selecton's upcoming meeting, so I was asking.
Yeah, on the night with Kevin. Yeah.
Yeah.
We do talk about working with, you know, use of incentives, but that's just going to be as we, as projects come along.
If we need to sell a property, right? You probably know from Texas, how Tiff's originated. We'll get into it now, but the need to use a lot beyond the bottom is what they originally intended.
So if we don't have anything on the overview page of 33, 3-1 is encourage appropriate economic development projects that expand the tax base at key locations and other vacant or underutilized sites. So we have a number of sub-bullets on page 34, and then some additional context on page 35 accompanying it.
So we need a blue box for 3.1.2. And then I've got comments on 35. So on 35, it has this improvement land, improvement-land value ratio. What is that? Is below 1 a good number, a bad number?
Okay, on page 35.
Yeah, up at the top in that, where it says 27 acres, 80 acres with an improvement land value ratio. So it says value of improvements in building divided by land value below 1. But like, is that, I guess I'm very confused by that, Paul.
That's probably too technical.
So I'm like, is below 1 good? Is above 1 good?
I think above 1, well, it's a question of, that number really determines when does a site become appropriate for redevelopment.
Because then, there's no ratio on some of the other sites.
Yeah.
Some do have a ratio. So I think we should, if we're going to have these development sites over the next, you know, handful of pages,
Yeah, I think this is just too.
Treat it the same, and then we've really got to explain that, because I have no idea what that means.
Well, and, right, and it's just, again, this is a moment in time. I mean, this number could change next month.
Yeah, I don't, I just could, you know.
For the public, they may not, and the reality too is, if anyone's looking, if a developer's looking at a site, they're going to run their own analysis of it, so it's probably not very, I should have caught that.
It might be something we just want to pull, because we can't be.
Typically, once you get to 1 and above, that's when the site is typically deemed to be more more appropriate for re, that, the conditions are such that it's going to get redeveloped.
Yeah, so.
That's not really, that's really out of the realm of what a master plan is. That's when you do a master plan for a site.
Yeah, I mean, I might take that out, because you can't use the ratio on all these. I think we only did it on the Old Colony Road in this one, so we might want to just pull that.
So when the number gets smaller, the stuff that's on the land is less valuable? Is that the?
I believe that's, yeah.
So when, as the number gets smaller, you should put something else there?
Well, that's telling, that's telling a property owner, an investor, that, yeah, it's time, there's no renovation, it's time to scrape it. So, again, it's an important tool, but not germane to a master plan. If we were doing, again, a study of this area, then you would hire, you would put that as part of it, but that's a little too much, not really relevant.
Yeah, and then the other comment I had is under the improvement strategy, bold heading, where it says we might look at a Carter overlay district extending beyond the BCC.
Wait, I'm sorry, Julie, what?
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, what?
Bottom, left column.
Yeah, where it says improvement strategy.
Okay.
So in that text, we say, we might want to create our Carter overlay district extended beyond the BCC.
Right.
This might want to be a place where we mention maybe even expanding the BCC.
I think that's what it said.
Or is it a different one? Is that a different overlay district?
Well, the BCC's not an overlay, so I think, Julie, you're right. It's.
I think we got to, I don't know, food for thought on that, Paul.
Or just extend the BCC.
To me, this reads something different than the BCC.
It is. I mean, this is, you know, that's the question, do we just want to do, like, in this area, we'll have, not tonight, but determine what would be the regulatory tool in that area? Would we go with an overlay? Or would we just go with BCC or create a new category, a new base zoning district?
Exactly. So maybe it's an and/or, I don't know. I just, that's just a note I put down, Paul, food for thought. But I probably can the improvement value ratio.
Yeah, that's going to go.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think adjusting that is good, but we also, these are all quote-unquote guidelines and vision rather than.
It's, yeah.
It's still pointing in the correct direction.
Yeah.
The intent is there, yeah.
Definitely.
Anything else on 34, 35? Or should we move on to the different development sites? Obviously, Reeden Barton is one that most of us are aware of in some way, shape, or form.
So on this one, I had a question on this one, Paul, on the improvement strategy yet again. This obviously is my favorite heading. At the end, it says, "The town may consider pursuing the following programs." So the first one says EPA.
Yep.
If that's the Environmental Protection Agency, that's an agency, not a program.
Yeah, that should be brownfields.
So I think we need to scrub it for all these sites, because I have this comment over and over again. Is it, are we listing the agency we want to work with, or the program, or is it a mix of both?
Well, we could just change that to also say, "Pursuing the following programs."
And partnerships?
And partnerships, yeah.
Yeah, like, something like that, because it's very confusing to me. And, I mean, you know, I know what all these acronyms mean. Most people do not.
You don't know, the public doesn't know what a 43D is?
Well, you know, I'm going to guess they don't know what a CDBG is.
Does it relate to the BGs that they have?
No.
Okay, I don't know.
Which, that is a program, not an agency. So I think, so for consistency's sake, on these, Paul, just look at those lists.
Yep.
One, spell out the acronyms. Two, make sure we have programs and our partners, and maybe we just change the terminology, and that'll help just clean it up.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on Reeden Barton other than a wrecking ball? And the Tiff will be good. In all honesty, that's where Tiff makes a lot of sense in that problem.
Good. Or district improvement financing.
Okay. We have the I-49, 495 interchange with Route 123. I think we went over that one fairly, in a decent amount of detail recently with the last zoning discussion. We have Greenwood's Marketplace. Julie, did you have a note about the comment being in Maryland here, or no?
No, I didn't.
Just leave it alone?
I left that one.
Okay. Uh, let's see, Old Colony Road Commercial District, Charlie.
We'll get rid of the.
This one's good. I feel like the picture doesn't depict what needs to change in that area. Because that, what needs to change in that area is the three or four buildings that are empty and falling to put down, rather than the ones that are successful.
Right. There may be some opportunities coming for that. All right, so change photo.
Yeah, this building is fine.
Yeah, but there's, I can think of at least two that are vacant without trying.
Yeah.
And and I guess, I don't know how far this extends. It just says the map dot. Obviously, this is kind of a corridor.
Yeah, and I kind of, I kind of took that dot and like put little arrows in both directions, thinking that we might want to just show that it's not just like one place.
Does it go all the way to, are they counting all the way to South Worcester, or is it?
I think we can ask them to, you know, replace this with a map.
I don't know.
Or a drone shot. Alan mentioned that down here. I don't know if they blew that area at all, but there could be maybe a good drone shot looking, kind of from the outer wall line down.
Okay.
And they also mentioned the, I guess they mentioned Charlie Country Store, which isn't even on 123.
Right, well, they're mentioning Charlie, so they're picking up South Worcester on this.
But Charlie Corner Store was on, well, it's on South Worcester, but it's not on 123.
Right.
That's a whole.
It's a big area.
Where, yeah. So I think the map or a drone shot showing what they.
Yeah, we need, we need definitely a little clarification on that. And then is that, see how they, so I kind of made this comment, Paul, you can kind of take it or leave it. When you see my comments, is that, like, here, it says 42.9 acres, 28 parcels. Like, what 28 parcels are those?
I'm deleting it. I think that just, that, again, that starts to get into the ratio.
The ratio, yeah.
It's just probably better to use a shot, you know, a map or a photo depicting the area.
Because on these, on a number of these, we have like the parcels with the numbers listed.
Right.
So it's then, like, do you put the parcels on the map, like, when you're using the aerials, so we know what parcels are included in each one of these?
Yeah, I wouldn't, not for a master plan. I mean, it's good if you're marketing a site to get that, so, but you link it right to the assessor's map.
And that, this definitely is doing that.
Yeah.
In the way it's written now. So maybe we just need to kind of think about that and scrub it a little bit.
I think, I think we should strike the Charlie Corner Store sentence as well, to Tim's point. It's kind of, it's not pertinent to what we're talking about.
I guess it depends what they're including.
What's that?
Depends what they're including in those 28 parcels.
Well, I mean, it's a standalone store that probably has a store behind it, so maybe we shouldn't even be referencing it.
Yeah, the other thing that makes that site a little bit more complicated is where the store was, its own residential.
Oh, yeah.
There are a couple of other businesses there, but they're non-conforming. See, I do know the term.
Yeah.
We can remove that.
Yeah. Paul, this is just a question. I guess I wasn't involved in this list, was kind of. Is the, is the old mill building on Barrow Street discussed at all?
In here?
I wrote that down, Tim.
The one where there was the big giant fire?
Yeah, it was close to there. You can actually put that in like an economic development site.
We talked about it, but there is a nonprofit called Mass Military Support Foundation that's going in there.
Really? Good. Really? Good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Even better, we don't need to put it in the plan.
No TIPS, but no property taxes anyway, so.
Oh, yeah, that's right, oh. Baby steps. Baby steps, it's a tough spot, so I
Yeah, and that's not even owned industrial.
I'm surprised. Anything further before we move to 3.2, 3-2, I'm gonna be technical on my own language. Supporting existing institutions and local business community by maintaining businesses and attracting new firms. Paul, I don't know if you want to mention in here that, to, to your horn a little bit, that the town has been doing increased outreach to local businesses to talk about things, I know you mentioned, you mentioned the rapid recovery plan and things like that, but
Yeah, and it's, it's covered in here.
Okay. We have a chart here showing job growth and tax rates, which shows a mix of split rates and flat rates. Which seems like it makes sense. They don't have any 2020 jobs number, I guess, huh?
Wait, not walk 2020. Depends which, what in 2020 of the state they
I'll see if they have updated.
Okay. 42 and 43 cover 3.2.1, which is creating a user-friendly development and permitting guide to encourage new businesses and existing business growth. And then 3.2.2 is implement placemaking strategy for village center, including signage. I'll start with the first one, since that actually is contained in one page and the next one is not, so. There's a lot of examples sent here from lots of local towns. Which kind of makes me feel bad.
Supposed to motivate you, Tim.
Shame, shame.
We're gonna have this done by the end of this year, do you want to change that date?
Nothing from Auburn. Paul, Alan said that the, the date here is the end of this year, is that, uh
Is that doable?
It's up to the EDC, right?
They're working on it.
Awesome.
They're working on it, and I, there's also, I can just show you real quick, we already are doing this on our website. Just get this, oh, let us share, okay, let's do a stop share real quick, but we have a, we purchased the software last year, and it's actually gotten quite a few hits, and one of the tools that we have is, and this is on our economic development page, I'll just go through it very quickly. These are a listing of different organizations to help businesses, but one of which will be us, all the different town departments, so if you get to this and you just want to know building permits, you can click right on the building inspector's website, business certificates with the town clerk, special permits, they come to us. So this is, in a way, doing that as well, it gets you right to the person you need to get to, and if they have, also, you know, if they have general questions, they know to either contact the town manager or the planning department.
Okay. Very cool. I just wanted to put you, put the EDC down for something they're gonna finish this year without them being aware.
I'm meeting with them in the next week, two weeks, talk about that, but they've been working on this for a while, so
Okay.
It'll, it'll get done.
I like the fact that the planning board is not listed as a responsible party.
They're giving us a break in this section.
Okay.
Well, hold that thought.
Just for 3.1.1.
I kept looking at this going, how are we doing all this? Job security, anyway.
So, 3.2.2 is implement placemaking strategy for the village center, including signage. So obviously, we talked about some of that stuff within the village center core district. But this kind of crosses two pages here. So that's on page 43 and 44 of the document.
Hey, Paul, I had a, I had a comment on 44, we might want to swap out this Montgomery County example for the Foxborough example that's listed as a success story. If we think that their wayfinding signage is a good example. Because we used Cambridge one, and then obviously got Worcester, but it looks like Foxborough did a good job.
Which wayfinding signs in Foxborough are we talking about?
I don't know, that's why I'm saying, I'm curious.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, it's not, I'm thinking of the Village Center, but I haven't been there in a little while.
Says, "A commissioned wayfinding signage to speak directly to the history of the town, wayfinding in Foxborough serves as a signal its role as a destination and direct visitors to centers of activity." If it's not a good example, don't put it in there.
It says commission, it doesn't say installed.
Yeah, is it in?
I'll ask, it'll mostly complete it, I haven't been up there in a while, it's gotta be in the circle.
Pictures are, it didn't happen.
Exactly, then we'll take it out.
Right.
Okay. There's a big blue box there, with lots of complementary actions.
Lots of partners, too.
Yes. Uh, did it do? I kind of want to put GATRA on there. Because I know they were involved, going back to the, the origins of the Village Center Core Working Group. GATRA was involved as well as the schools were involved, I'm not sure if they directly tie into this point of, um, businesses, but
I can, I can pass them.
Yep, yep, the 18 bus that runs through, that's GATRA 18 bus that goes through Taunton and Attaboro via Norton, I take that a lot of times. And it's very convenient, and ICE to take the route 140 bus from Great Woods Plaza to Mansfield, and it's very convenient to take the bus, but GATRA took it away because of the pandemic, so I wish GATRA would change the minds and restore the 140 shuttle, right?
Yes, and you brought that up at another meeting, 2P.
That's right.
Yeah.
About time to bring it back, right?
Yep, right.
Okay.
Why did GATRA do that?
Everybody had to make hard choices, so it's kind of weird, uh Do you have anything else that I wanted to add on 322? Pretty dense page and a half there. We're moving on to page 45, which is 2 dot, 3.2.3.
That'd be the blue box.
Yes, it does. Which means that the other section's gonna get bumped pretty much all to the next page.
Yeah, to the next page.
Which works out better for them. 3.2.3 is update zoning to encourage more compact development that fronts the street, particularly around Norton's Village Center. Again, that kind of ties into the Village Center Core zoning. I'm not sure what other action plans. I guess it's the land use strategies, okay. 3.2.4 is attract businesses based on community priorities such as grocery stores and life sciences. That is a long section there, covering pretty much a page in and of itself without the blue box there.
So in that blue box, Paul?
Yeah.
I think that last sentence that says promote work from home amenities and local cowork, co-working spaces was actually, like, it might have, I think that's deleted, because that was actually the title of the next strategy, and it might just be leftover text.
Oh, well, okay.
Unless it's supposed to be there, but I'm assuming it
No, that looks like it.
Yep.
How many pages does this, that's the plan, yeah?
120 something.
Six, yeah, 126.
Yep. We're only covering 53 tonight, though.
We're almost done with tonight.
Yep.
Let me see. We're on 3.2.5, unless I hear his comments on, dot four. Paul, I would just, for the, on page 47, for that picture of the co-working space, I realize it's not local, no, I think that's fine, because it's a good example. I might just note that that's in Virginia, because there is a Brickyard Office Park in Massachusetts. Yeah, I see it there, but there is one in, like, 495.
Would the, um, Cambridge Innovation Center in Providence be a local example we could use?
I don't know about that one.
They're talking about suburban co-working, so it's That's like, that's right in the jewelry district, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess it's more now, now.
Okay, okay, that, right, that would be a different scale than, than this, although that's a great example. There's actually another nice one in Onlyville. But again, renovation of an old mill, so
Yeah.
That would be different.
Different, yeah.
Okay. I feel like the wording in that section is awkward to me, because it's 6% of work from home 2019, which will increase well after the pandemic, but it's gonna be tough to capture, like, how much of that's temporary versus permanent.
Right, right.
Because, no, I'm permanent remote now, I know other people are as well, I know other people were remote, but now they're back in the office-ish.
Right.
So
You'll have people who are doing flexible schedules.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm, yeah. It's not a black or white kind of thing now. Which is interesting in and of itself, but That 6% is pre-pandemic.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. Do we have any data on percentage of Norton was broadband?
I don't think there's reliable information on that.
Okay.
But that is something we need to be looking at, because, because we've seen with Zoom, sometimes we get knocked out, or people can't get on because of it, and certainly the ARPA funding, a lot of it's going toward broadband.
It's possible that's in, one of the complementary actions is 6.2.3.
Yeah, there's an action later on that's in the tech, you know, in the tech world, looking at increasing our broadband capabilities.
Yep.
Let me cheat and look, and see if it's there, even though we're not talking about that page.
Don't think it, well, anyway.
No, there's not, like, a percentage, is that what you're asking, Tim?
It talks about how they have limited choice.
Right, but there's not really a
It does not talk about percentage.
No.
Okay. I'm now satisfied that note of curiosity in memory.
See what happens when Starlink comes active.
What, SkyNet?
Well, no, yes.
Okay. Okay, we're almost there, 3.2.6, work with Wheaton College and surrounding neighborhoods to reinforce a strong town. I assume that's Groen?
Gown, town gown, town gown relationship. It means the relationship between a municipality and the
Town gown.
Yeah.
I read it and thought it meant town grown, not making the connection of Wheaton and gown.
Yeah.
Apparently, I need some copy or something.
It's just hip lingo we use, like, Eds and Meds, you know?
That I know, yeah.
I always suggest adding the school superintendent to one of the, as his responsible party, because I'm sure he's already developing a relationship with Wheaton College, they bring in student teachers, for example.
Yeah.
Recreation does, too, but on a small scale, in terms of, like, assistant coaches and stuff for soccer, but that's probably not a responsible party, I think I would add.
Yeah, it looks like school committee, we had to put a body.
Okay. I mean, is it weird to put Wheaton College here as a responsible party?
Oh, jeez, they should, again, I, well, we'll make sure they are, well, they are.
Not on the document I have.
Not in the blue box.
In the blue box.
They're in the blue box.
No, not my
Oh.
What version do you have?
Well, the printed one is
No, it doesn't have any, this one does.
The printed one I have does.
I think they're saying that as a responsible party.
I mean, they're outside of the town.
My version has, okay, I might have a
That's fine.
They're, they're, yeah. Yeah.
Do we have, who's the, do we have, like, a Wheaton Development Liaison with Brian Douglas out there?
I don't know who we're working with now.
Okay.
But there is some, there are folks, but we'll, you know, we can work through the president's office.
Well, the lunch board members has a, it's one of their, well, one of their jobs, it's a liaison, so, Wheaton, I forget which one. I think they like to do one every year, or
Probably does, it's on a board at Wheaton, right?
That's like where they're responsible parties.
Yeah.
There are different branches of opportunities that we can, that we would use this, not even just that formal one, but just like when they were working with us on the, on the village center.
Yeah.
And these, there could be opportunities for, um, job training in different industries, like life sciences, that sort of thing.
I don't think they have, they live
Not sure, they have sciences, but I
Yeah.
We need to talk with them.
I do not know enough about that, to speak intelligently. I do not know enough about that to speak intelligently. There's nothing further there. 3 dot 2 dot 7 is coordinate local businesses to create a formal network of Norton's small businesses. So this is where you mentioned your survey, even though you didn't say that you did it, but...
And this is something we're going to try to develop as part of the West Main Street District and then hopefully grow it from there.
Yeah. Okay. Steve, I don't know if I wanna put you on the spot here, but in terms of local businesses and that kind of thing, it seems like it's right up your alley. Is there anything that you wanted to add to this section?
Um, no, no, this time.
Okay. Saw your camera on, so I figured it was fair game.
Absolutely.
Okay. Last one. And the last one is 3 dot 2 dot 8, help local businesses capitalize on Norton's recreation and nature areas such as the bike trail. Is the bike trail fully done or not yet?
Hasn't started yet.
No.
Not yet.
Yeah, so...
It's in progress, though.
Do we wanna put a... We have the timeline for the performance measure, but I'm not sure if we wanna call that out at all or not.
Well, it's in the transportation section separately.
Okay.
Yeah, it says complementary strategy.
This would be about linking business, particularly retail, to the trail. So for example, where it crosses 123, maybe we should look at rezoning that area to try to get some small coffee bars there.
Like opposite the landscape business that's in the old station?
Yeah.
Or adjacent to that and that development where there's least space available?
Right.
Where people could be riding their bikes and pull over and grab a coffee or an ice cream and hang out and then ride back.
Wow, that's a good idea, Paul. A coffee bar and an ice cream at the rail trail on 123? That's a good idea!
I have to thank Mr. Christopher Keys for that one.
Yep.
He's a big advocate for the, and he's helping volunteer to help move that, uh, the rail trail along and has plenty of other ideas, too.
Okay.
So yeah, so the rail trail is in a separate...
Perfect.
Strategy. I had not gotten there.
Yeah, this is...
Okay. Is there anything further on this section or have we completed our first three sections here?
That's it.
That's it.
Face won't.
Obviously, we didn't cover any copy edits, text spacing notes that people may have, so if there are digital versions with notes to pass along to Paul or hard copy notes, please send those in whatever way is most convenient, I guess. I know we still have to sign the endorsement of the A and R here. Is there anything else that anybody wanted to discuss at the meeting, otherwise?
So we're gonna review the remainder of this prior to 8:10, so we can cover it.
Sorry, yes. We should try to get through the rest of it for the next meeting? Unless, I don't think we have any... I don't think we have any terribly complex coming for our next meeting?
Nothing complex.
Okay.
Oh, I think Chris made a comment.
Chris has.
I think, I saw kudos to the planning board, so I don't need to read, I don't need to read it.
Thank you very much for taking the time to view this portion of the master plan.
Okay. Well, I'm glad he enjoyed it so much. He loved it so much, we'll do it again next time. So without any further business for the main body of the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion and Scott for the second. Is there any further discussion?
Pass it down.
Just kidding. Motion to adjourn, Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne? Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much, everybody. Look forward to seeing everybody at the meeting.